Welcome to one of the most important community conversations that you're gonna be having this year. I'm here to ask you to be social media ambassadors tonight for Hope and Healing on social media. We're asking you to get on your phones right now, post and let everyone know that we are streaming live right now at wsvn.com. Wsvn.com. Go ahead and grab your phones, post and let everyone know that they can join the conversation at wsvn.com. And then I'm gonna ask you throughout the night to continue the conversation by posting and tweeting and using the hashtag #HopeAndHealing. Let everyone know that you're supporting Bishop Fernandez in restoring our community, the community where we live, where our kids go to school, where we build our businesses, where we wanna see change. So post, tweet, and use the hashtag #HopeAndHealing. We do it for the Super Bowl. We do it for politics. We do it for our reality TV shows. But tonight, let's do it for our community. The hashtag is #HopeAndHealing, and they can stream live right now at wsvn.com. Thank you.
Good evening. Y'all could do better than that. Good evening. All right. Well, we thank you so much for joining us here tonight. So glad that you made it in your schedule to come out and participate in this town hall meeting. Welcome to the Faith Center. This is our home. We're a local church here, and we're so glad to have you in our house. And we're really pleased to be able to partner with WSVN, Cox Media, the Broward Sheriff's Office, the Wiggins Agency, the City of Sunrise, and many others to sponsor and to host this town hall meeting. We're expecting a great evening. It's an evening with a focal point of hope and healing. And we think this is gonna be an evening where we're gonna walk away with some tangible benefits that will impact our community as we move forward. Once again, we're so pleased you took out the time to join us today. And to help ensure that we have a successful evening, we wanna make sure that we achieve our mission tonight. And to do that, there are a few housekeeping items I just wanna go over with you. On the stage, we'll be seated panelists. It's gonna be a total of 18 panelists from various areas throughout the community that we thought might be best positioned to make a beneficial contribution to the discussion tonight. Many of you may not be familiar with this facility, but the restrooms are located in the lobby. And take note now of all the exits. Should we need to exit, and there's an emergency exit, you can go out any of the exits in the rear or on the east or the west sides. Our ushers will be able to assist you with that. We're asking that all cell phones be placed on the silent or muted mode. And we wanna create an atmosphere tonight for cooperation and respect, unity, open and honest communication. Therefore, we're asking that there's no loud outbursts or protests, if you will. We wanna be respectful to the house because this is the house of God. So we wanna be cognizant of that. We do realize that some of the topics may stir our emotions, and that's okay. That's fine. We just, once again, wanna be respectful in our communication amongst one another. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions tonight to the panel. To do so, just complete the card. We have question cards. The ushers that are standing in the aisle now, they have question cards. Now, the moderator will ask the panel a series of questions that might be pertinent to the subject matter tonight. But you may have questions that's burning in your heart that you wanna ask as well. And if you wanna do that, just raise your hands now, and the ushers will get you a question card. Please keep your hands up. Ushers, look around to your left and to your right, and let's get those cards out to everyone. Please keep your hands up and work with us. We're gonna get those cards to you. Once you get those cards, fill them out. There's a place for your name. Put your name there, and I'll explain in a minute why that's important. And then put your question there. Try to be succinct with your question. Let's try to keep it on point to the things that we're discussing tonight. And, you know, the issues that we're facing in this community around the country has to do with primarily the relationship between the community and the law enforcement and the laws relating to the policies and procedures that are being executed. And to come to an understanding, so let's try to keep things on point relative to that. If you're asking a question that's already been asked, that question probably won't be asked a second time. Many of you in here, we're gonna do our best to get to as many questions as we can. We have Craig Stevens, who's gonna be one of our moderators onstage. Jill Tracy is one of our floor moderators. And Maestro, he's not out here, but he'll be our other floor moderator. Once you fill your question out, write clearly so we make sure we're able to read it. Just raise it up. Our ushers or some of our staff members will receive it from you and bring it down to the moderators at the appropriate time they're gonna ask the question. Go ahead and start filling it out now so that we can go ahead and get those questions to the moderators, and they can prepare themselves to ask the questions at the appropriate time. When the question is asked, the moderator may ask, let's say it's Thomas Williams wrote a question out. She may say, "Tom, I have a question from Thomas Williams." "Thomas, where are you?" Stand up. So that we can identify who's asking the question, and the moderator will then read the question on your behalf. That'll help us to get through as many questions as possible, and we'll identify the appropriate panelists that we think should answer that particular question if it relates to that particular area of expertise. Okay, so that's how we're going to flow. Once again, we're gonna get to as many questions as we can. If throughout the night you don't have a card and you think you, something came up, it piqued your interest, and you think, "Hey, I may wanna ask a question," go ahead and raise your hands. Our ushers are gonna keep those cards in their hands, and they're gonna get it to you. Once again, once you've completed it, just raise the card up, and we'll retrieve it from you and get it to the moderators to ask the questions. All right, we're good? Yes, all right. Well, let's stand as we like to do in everything we do here at the Faith Center. We wanna open up with a word of prayer. So I ask if you would please stand and join me in a word of prayer. If you will bow your heads. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together as a community united for a common cause. As we seek hope and healing for our community, we pray for your divine guidance and direction. God, we ask for your presence in this place. And we pray that when we are done here this evening, that your will is done, and you are pleased with the efforts put forth by the faith community, the law enforcement community, political community, and the community at large. It is our prayer that this be an atmosphere of cooperation, openness, honesty, and resolution. God, as we discuss important issues that impact each of us here and our families, our schools, businesses, and even our places of worship, we pray for your divine intervention. Because it is your word that says, "If we, your people, who are called by your name, would humble themselves and pray, then will you hear from heaven and heal our land." Be with us tonight as we seek to heal our land, as we strive to create a culture of cooperation and unity throughout all areas of our community. Let what we do here tonight be the beginning of a model to be used throughout the entire United States to deal with issues that impact not only our community, but also our hearts, our minds, our families, and our loved ones. Let this be the beginning of the end of the senseless violence that has taken so many lives way too soon. As we start this dialogue tonight, we pray for the condition of the hearts of everyone here tonight. Bless those that lead this great county and the cities within. Bless those sworn to protect this great land. Bless those who educate and influence our children. Bless those who form the neighborhoods that comprise the wonderful community we call home. And Lord, bless our dear children, who are the future. Let us pass on to them peace, love, and unity like never seen before. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. You may have your... No, as a matter of fact, I'm so sorry. Please remain standing. We're going to proceed with our national anthem. So if you would please help me welcome Rochelle Saunders to the stage to sing our national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of free and the home of the brave?
God bless you. God bless America. If you can keep your eyes focused on the screen. Thank you.
The communities of Broward County must come together to build a bridge that unites us. We must believe in the success of our cities and our communities. I also do believe that law enforcement and the community must have mutual respect for each other. Each and every one of us must look within our hearts and get rid of hatred, racism, and accept the diversity of our communities. I have hope in South Florida that we can be a much sought-after place where young people have hope for a brighter future, businesses can also thrive, and families are safe.
You put on this uniform to protect and to serve. That's what I do. That's what keeps me going.
We out here trying to do the right thing, and we out here trying to help.
There's nothing on this planet that's perfect, and we are human beings. And being human beings, we make mistakes, and we're fallible. We're not infallible.
I'm Shonda Martin. I am a sergeant with the Broward Sheriff's Office. Currently, I'm assigned to the West Park, Pembroke Park District, where I am a road patrol supervisor.
My name is Deputy Acosta. Been with the Broward County Sheriff's Office for approximately 15 years. Currently assigned to the School Resource Unit.
I'm Sergeant Floyd Baker. I have been in law enforcement now for 36 years. I have been with Broward County Sheriff's Office since 1985. Every other night, we would have shootings. We would come find shell casings. Bullets are going flying around, and you have, it puts the children and the innocent people in danger. It used to be sometimes we'd come up here, there'd be 15 or 20 people just hanging out out here, drinking, carrying drugs, selling drugs, carrying weapons of all kinds you can imagine. Look at it now. It's pretty quiet, isn't it?
It is challenging, and I do see the tension. I do feel the tension with the community, you know, with the kids. Sometimes, you know, they'll ask me, "Hey, have you ever been involved in a shooting?" And I'll say, "No, I haven't been involved in a shooting. I hope I never have to..."
I was born in the hood. I can blend in with the hood. That's how I look at it. I can adapt to any environment.
If you're just driving by in your air-conditioned car and you don't step out and say hello to somebody, how do you know them? "Hey, how you doing, ma'am?" "Somebody throw that stuff in your yard?"
They always do.
You talk to people, and if they open up to you, they'll tell you things, especially if they start to trust you a little bit.
And these young boys couldn't take old shit and I selling drugs, rob people's houses. The rent they sell while y'all won't put them in jail. We pay taxes.
Yes, ma'am, and you know we do. Quite frankly, this is old-fashioned police work. That's all it used to be, is the officer on the footbeat.
Temporal cam, ma'am. Show me a route. They're sending me to back up a unit on a Volvo domestic. Temporal, ma'am. What did he say or do to you to harass you? I give people the benefit of the doubt. You know, sometimes people just want to think.
Ma'am, ma'am, slow down, slow down.
Relax. We know you're frustrated. Relax here. I believe in the higher power of God, that he's the ultimate judge of us all. I'm a Christian, and if I didn't have my faith to resort back on, then I don't think I would be able to do this job.
I'll color four blue ones, and then we'll mix them. We need to bridge the gap between the youth and law enforcement.
I'm sorry.
It takes a little bit of working with them and introducing myself to them and just getting them to talk and just interacting with them, you'll see those barriers come down. You guys know how to do a layup line? And they know that we're here to help them. They know that we're human, just like them. We have problems, just like them. We have families, just like them.
Good job.
I don't think a police officer gets up and wakes up in the morning and say, "Hey, I'm gonna hurt somebody today. Hey, I'm gonna kill somebody." No, they wake up, they put on their uniform, and they say, "You know, I'm gonna protect my streets. I'm gonna do what I have to do to go back home to my family."
How you doing, sir? I've never shot my gun out here on the streets. Vast majority of us never do. Nice seeing you again.
Okay.
And I hope in the next two years, 341 days, when I have to leave, I don't ever have to do it. How you doing, Mr. Ross? How you doing?
Every time he see me, he stop. And we sit down and chat a little bit. That's the way all officers should do in a community.
I really like police system, and that's all I want to be.
Here, let me put it on your shirt for you, if you don't mind.
Uh-oh. Hey, good partner. Hey, all right.
Tell them thank you.
He's getting bigger all the time.
They are the ones that hopefully in the future will see, "We're not evil. We're out here for everybody, every day." You've helped protect people out here now. You keep everybody here safe.
Hello, Broward County. Hello, Broward County. Hello, hello. Check one, two. Hello, Broward County. Come on, let's just give yourselves a round of applause this evening. Thank you so much for participating in this town hall meeting. It's a well-needed discussion. And I'm eternally grateful for all of you who are here and those of you who are streaming live. Let me get out of the way, and I wanna introduce, first of all, let me just thank the following people: Channel 7, Cox Media Group, Miami, that's 99 Jam Easy, 93.1, 97.3, and Hot 105. Of course, the Faith Center, the Broward Sheriff's Office, and the Wiggins Agency for your participation. All right, let's thank God for them. Well, at this time, I'll get out of the way. And please, would you welcome on the stage Greg Stevens from Channel 7?
Thank you, and good evening. And weather notwithstanding, sorry about that. Glad you could make it, and welcome to our little town hall meeting. We're glad you could be able to... Round of applause for coming out tonight, please. WSVN, Channel 7, is delighted to be a part of this because this is such an important evening for all of us here. And it's a big part of something 7 News is working on, which I'm gonna talk about later on in the evening. But with this distinguished panel, and I'll introduce each of them in just a moment, and so many in the audience, I think it's a tribute to this community that we have this turnout among state and local officials, law enforcement, to be a part of this conversation. So I do wanna acknowledge, before we go forward, and I'll ask those in the audience to please stand, members of our state legislature, our county commission, mayors, police officials, school administrators. It's a list that, quite frankly, I could read for a better part of the evening if I had the time, and we don't. But we wanna acknowledge their being here this evening. Thank you very much. It is a night of hope and healing, as the graphic shows, and we're gonna talk a lot about that, hope and healing, this evening. All of us are painfully, and perhaps in some cases personally, aware of the difficulties that exist between law enforcement and the community. I spend a lot of time, unfortunately, talking about them and covering them. And it's at the point in some places where it's strained that critically important relationship between the police and the public they serve. So that's the point of this evening, a talk, a chat. We're gonna begin a discussion. We're not gonna solve everybody's problems with this one meeting, but I think it's important that we take this first step for an open, honest, and civil discussion. The idea is to walk in somebody else's shoes. Put yourself in the position of a police officer. Put yourself in the position of somebody who has to encounter a police officer. Walk a little bit in somebody else's shoes, and perhaps we come away understanding a little better. So I'm here to facilitate. I'm gonna have a couple of questions, but quite frankly, I wanna hear from you. And I'm glad to see my good friend Jill Tracy here, representing Hot 105. And Antoine Edwards from Cox Media. I know you're here somewhere as well. And I was, Jill and I were talking earlier, and I said, "Do your best to get me some good questions." And I see you got a stack already. All right, we're good. We're delighted. Before we get to the talk, though, I wanna introduce some of the folks who, again, I think we're so fortunate to have with us this evening in no particular order because they're all equally important for what we're here to discuss this evening. George Odom, an attorney here in Broward County. Perhaps it's a familiar face, George. And we can applaud all the way through because they all deserve it. Chief John Brooks, of Sunrise. Pastor Marcus Davidson, senior pastor, New Mount Olive Baptist Church. Sheriff Scott Israel, one of our partners this evening. We're fortunate to have the Honorable Congressman Alcee Hastings of the 20th District. Bishop Henry Fernandez, senior pastor. And thank you for welcoming us into your home. Thank you. Michael Sats, the Broward County State Attorney. The Honorable Congressman, former Chair of the Congressional Black Caucus, Emmanuel Cleaver of Missouri. Dr. Lorik Bolzora, Associate Dean of Broward College. Sunrise Mayor Michael Ryan. Sean Davis, the Chair of the Broward Urban League. Jerry Russian, Cox Media Group Consultant and local radio legend. Mayor Marty Kuyer of Broward County. Pastor Doug Soder, the senior pastor, that is, of the Cavalry Chapel. Dr. Rosalind Osgood, Chair of the Broward School Board. Sergeant Drew Anderson of the Sunrise Police. Marcia Ellison, President of the NAACP Fort Lauderdale. And the Honorable Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz of the 23rd District. And now that we've introduced each of them, one more big round of applause for everybody, please. Now, here's the hard part for my job. I have 18 phenomenal talkers. These are public figures for a reason. So my job is to try to get everybody to talk, and most importantly, have you talk. So I'm gonna get the ball rolling, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Tracy because I knew she's got a question warmed up. And I wanna start, and I'm gonna try to target my questions as we go along. And I wanna start with Jerry, Marcia, and Sean. NAACP, Urban League, and media, radio legend. If you had to characterize, we all know what's going on in other parts of the country, characterize the state of relations between, and I know we can't single them out department to department, but in general, the community and the police departments that serve the communities. We'll take it one, two, three, please. You go ahead, please.
Oh, cool. Well, I think it's a matter of trust, a lack of trust. I think that each young black person take his or her experience with them everywhere you go, in particular, the experience with the police departments. I've been stopped about 10 times in my life, but I'm about 70 years old, so that's not that bad. Most of those stops went very smooth, very respectful, but three of them was very ugly. And I'm a cool dude. And when I say they got ugly, it's not because I got ugly. It was just something happened, and I'm yell that and scream that. So that put a thing in my head, but I outgrew it in my case. But a young 17, 18-year-old, whatever that experience is, he's not gonna get over that easy. So he's very, very fearful, and there's no trust at all in any confrontation, any stop.
So is that your sense that, at this point in your opinion, that trust in some cases is strained? Is that an okay word to use, strain?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. You can't change situations around the world or across the country. But when it comes to individuals in any given community, or Sisdrunk, Overtown, in Miami, whoever it is, it doesn't matter. Whenever that light flash, you know, the average guy's gonna get nervous. And once that cop, a police officer, scream, and they scream a lot, now that guy's nervous. He's afraid. I don't wanna take up a lot of time, but I had one that screamed, "Shut up, you have my head." "Shut up, shut up, it's my head." I said, "What the heck is he saying? Was he putting, 'Put my hands on my head? Don't move your head.'" He was just, but I'm serious. But I'm an old, cool dude at the time. So I just kinda like did like nothing, just kept my hands up. But you can't scream. Nobody hear you when you scream, believe it or not. When you talk softly, people listen more intently. When you scream, they tend to tune you out.
Right. Well, and I think, and we'll pass it over to Sean. I think the whole point, and you'll hear me come back to this, is people wanna be heard. Wanna be heard. It really is that simple. You wanna be validated, you wanna be understood. And when somebody's screaming, it's, you're missing an opportunity to be heard. Mr. Davis, please.
I think it's a matter of respect. And I think that the officers have to command respect. And I think the individuals, the kids, need to have that respect as well. And I think when there's a breakdown in the community, that's where we see what's happening across the United States today. We have some very talented, thoughtful, mind-provoking individual kids that are out there that just need an opportunity and a chance. And when they're confronted with screams, as you just heard, anger, and I've had my share of stops as well, you just need to know that they're individuals too. And that doesn't necessarily mean that they're doing anything wrong. It has to be, because it's a strained relationship, it has to be a coming together of both the community and the officers. And that's what we're sorely lacking right now. Hopefully, we're building that together.
Well, I think this is a big step in the right direction. Marcia Ellison, I'll pass this back to you. Oh, you're already, you're set up. All right. The state relations between law enforcement and our community, in your opinion, your view, right now?
In my view, if you are, you are the sum total of every time, every experience you've had with law enforcement, be it a child who had a bad experience at school, you know, in Broward County, for example. We led the state of Florida in school-based arrests. Thank God, through our system and through our principals and our school leaders, and especially our superintendent, we are now gone from the top to the bottom of the bad list. But those things stay with, a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work, and a lot of cooperation with law enforcement and the community. However, I can share with you that mothers, speaking for myself, who is a mother of a son, we are afraid. We don't know what police officer is gonna show up. A lot of my friends are law enforcement officers. They're good people. They do their, they do their jobs. However, it seems to us in the community that the bad cops are winning, and not enough is being done to hold those individuals accountable. And that is what's scary to us.
And you raised an interesting point, and I'd make two points. And then I wanna come to Jill for a question. But very often, I hear how, how come the media is only talking about the negative stories, the bad things that police officers do? And look, there are bad cops. Guess what? There are bad doctors, there are bad teachers. There are bad doctors, there are bad teachers, there are bad TV journalists. I won't name names. I won't tell you who I think they are. You're gonna find bad in every line of work. Later on, I'm gonna talk about a segment that we're gonna be introducing that's gonna celebrate the good. Like you, I have a lot of friends in law enforcement, and I know the good they do in our community and what they try to do. That I'll discuss later, but now I want to get to a question. What do we have?
First question, piggybacking off of the gentleman next to my mentor, Jerry Russian. And speaking about respect, and we all seem to go back to respect being the key to every encounter. Respect, however, cannot be legislated. So how do we improve respect among people in the community and the police?
Who'd like to take that? How do we, you can't legislate it. Hopefully, Mom and Dad teach it, or the schools teach it. How do we improve that? Congresswoman.
Thank you, and thanks to everybody who came out, and to Bishop Fernandez for organizing this important town hall. About a year and a half ago, Congressman Hastings and I, and I talked about this a few Sundays ago here at the Faith Center with Congressman Hastings and former Mayor of Philadelphia, Michael Nutter, who joined us. We formed a law enforcement community task force that resulted from a conversation that we had on the House floor at the end of 2014, after we had explosive events happen in Ferguson, in Baltimore, in so many communities around the country. And Congressman Hastings and I both recognized that that tension existed in Broward County, but had not yet really reached the surface, but that it could. And we wanted to make sure that we could bring our law enforcement, our elected and our community leadership together to start to have dialogue about how to strengthen those relationships. And the thing that stuck with me, right in the very, very beginning, at the time, a young lady at Dillard High School was the student body president. She came to our first roundtable discussion, and she stood and told us all, this was in the sheriff's conference room, that in her community, young people, when they faced danger and saw a law enforcement officer, their instinct was to run away from law enforcement rather than run towards law enforcement, because they didn't view police officers as a refuge. And we knew that we had to change that mindset, and it is through dialogue and meetings and the task forces that we've been able to set up in high schools all around the county, working with the Urban League and town halls like this one, that we can really try to make sure that we rebuild trust, that we focus on community policing. The best thing that I can say about what has happened in that time is that every single law enforcement leader in all 31 cities, plus Sheriff Israel's team, has been actively engaged and is totally committed to this, as are our community leaders. And that's so critical, and we've seen amazing support and interest from our youth as well.
And to follow up, Dr. Osgood, I was coming to you next. You read my mind, we're there. Schools, ideally, kids get this at home, and you see police officers in the communities working with kids, and ideally, that fosters a good relationship from here on up. The extent to which kids might not get it at home, where do the schools come in?
Well, I think we've been very aggressive in the schools. Our school board is led by nine fabulous leading ladies, two others, Ms. Baltimore and Ms. Good are here tonight, and we began to work with the community and take a stand, as Ms. Ellison said, where in 2013, we were arresting more kids in Broward County than any other county. With the leadership of Superintendent Runcie, we changed our discipline matrix to stop that. And we have gone a step farther, where many of our schools, we have SROs through our partnerships with our cities. So they're not just providing safety in the school, many of them are serving as mentors and interacting with the children. This morning, I had the awesome opportunity of meeting with the Fort Lauderdale Police Department, where we will launch this school year, a new initiative, where we will have law enforcement officers in every third grade class in the city of Fort Lauderdale to mentor, to help the kids, whether it's in PE, not there as law enforcement officers, but just there as a citizen to work with and help them. And I think as we continue to build community like we're doing now, and we continue to connect every sector of our community to this conversation, and then we mimic it for our kids. Let me just be clear. How we handle this moment is gonna influence the next generation. Our kids are gonna mimic what they see us do, what they hear us say. So when we come together like we're doing tonight, we partner with law enforcement. So now, law enforcement is going to work and help our children, and then in January, for MLK and Ms. Baltimore and Ms. Good is here, and this meeting, I guess, was sunshine, so we're okay. But in January, for MLK celebration, we will have a district-wide celebration, where we will celebrate law enforcement officers, so that we're working both sides of the coin.
Think about that. A police officer in every third grade in the city of Fort Lauderdale, imagine when they get to middle school or high school, they'll have that lengthy relationship, and that might, not might, that would, I think, produce good results. Jill.
Shelley Pond with Good News of South Florida. You wanna stand, Shelley? Where are you?
Hi, Shelley.
Shelley? Yes, she is. Besides prayer, what can local churches do to build trust and bridge the community?
Please.
Yes, I think, you know, local churches have an opportunity to address the spiritual issues behind what people see, because when we open the Bible and we say, "God says in His Word that every person, every man, woman, and child on this planet is made in His image." That's the bottom line, and that's the one common denominator and factor that you can't get around. So if you look someone in the eye and say, "This is a person made in the image of God," how do I show respect to God for them? That's a powerful thing that transcends language and culture and time, and we have to teach our sons. I want to applaud all the parents who have their kids here, because our kids are watching the way we do this, and they're watching the way we look in people's eyes, or whether we talk to people or talk past people. And if we can look at someone and say, "This is a person made in the image of God," I want to show them the love and respect of the Creator, that's where this conversation can begin to really get good.
Bishop, because we're in your house, I'd like to hear from you, please.
You know, first of all, I think the clergy in Broward County must first unite. You know, we can have all the town hall meetings you can, if you will, to resolve the issue, but I think for pastors, ministers of all faith, we first must come to the table, and we have got to be the ones to become the light, to show our community that we can come together for one common cause, and that is to help the next generation. And that's my desire, and I will reach out to any pastor, any clergy in this county to say, "Let's come to the table, put our theological differences aside, and look out for God's people, whether they're white, black, or yellow."
Before we, I just, I want to post something to Chief Brooks, remember you from the Miami days, way back when, way, way back when, Sheriff Israel. How can we, the public, how can we be better partners? What is it that we could be doing that, because it's easy to turn it on law enforcement, but what could we be doing to be better partners?
Well, I think it first starts out, you know, the person who's addicted to drugs, until they want help, they can't get help. So I came here to say to the community tonight, we in law enforcement don't do everything perfect, we make mistakes, and we do things throughout the year. When we look at it and we view it from a command staff perspective, we're embarrassed and we're disappointed. We need to get better. But as Pastor says, the Bible also tells us to respect authority, and we have to do this together. So how about this? Let's start out, but as a community, there are so many men and women in uniform tonight. Why don't you let them know what you think about them right now? You know, where Dr. King said that faith is taking the first step and not worrying about where the staircase is. We as a community, we as a law enforcement community, we need to have faith in each other. Not a week goes by that I don't sit down with command staff and we look at one of the deputies we may have on our department, and we scratch our head and we say, "How did he or she get to here right now?" But tell me that, whatever line of work you're in, or whatever industry you're in, you don't scratch your head and go, "How did he or she get to be here right now?" So we have to understand, don't judge law enforcement by the police misconduct that a few have committed. It's not right, and it's not fair, and it's my job, and Chief Brooks's job, and the other command staff and law enforcement's job, to make sure that we don't judge our community by the misdeeds of a few, and that's how we'll get together.
I think, and as I said earlier, no matter what, you can go in and buy a cup of coffee, and somebody's really good at it, and somebody's not. You can go to a doctor, and somebody saved your life, and somebody killed your onida. I mean, it's, well, and I say that because in, this is the hard stuff, and you see so much of it, but there, but for the grace of God, when you have to make life-or-death decisions, people are human, and they do the best they can, and people aren't perfect. Chief, I think you might follow up on that a little bit.
You know, the last few weeks have been very, very tough on law enforcement, but I'll tell you, the community has really responded. We've had cards, we've had food delivered to the police department, we've had an outpouring from our community. You know, I try, every time I hire somebody, and I interview each and every person that comes to work for the Sunrise Police Department, and I look them in the eye, and I tell them one thing. If you would treat people like you would treat them as your family, as your mother, as your father, grandmother, grandfather, brother, and your sister, if you treat people with respect and dignity, you'll never have a problem on this department. Every single person. And then when I swear them in, I tell them the same thing at our swearing-in. And we've worked really hard in Sunrise to make sure we're getting quality people who respect people and perform their job with dignity.
Thanks, Chief. And at some point soon, if somebody doesn't have the question coming up, I want to talk to your colleague Sergeant Anderson about the recruitment process and how you develop personnel. I'm gonna get to a question first, but, because I think that may come up, but, and when you hear sensitivity training, I've heard that phrase for 25 years, I'm not sure what that entails, but I want to talk about that at some point. But first, we have a question.
We do, Craig. We actually have a few in regards to the process of getting the police officers on board. Are there any plans for a mental evaluation as being a part of that process?
I guess, Sergeant, or is that a step? The question is, you've got to recruit somebody prospective on staff. Is a psychiatric evaluation part of the screening process, is the question?
It is a part of the screening process. You initially put your application in, then you go through the entire interview section, then you do get an interview, or you have to be interviewed by a psychiatrist to make sure that you're fit for the job. Once they pass that, then it gets to the chief, and the chief makes his final decision as to whether or not that person's fit for the job. But we do take the word of a psychiatrist before they even move on to the chief.
And I'm expecting, thank you, Sheriff, it's similar at BSO, or?
It is, it's very similar at BSO, but probably the most excited part of why I wanted to come to this community forum tonight, to have this conversation, and Bishop and I have discussed this. One of our colonels is in the audience tonight, who runs our professional standards, Colonel Jack Dale, and about a week ago, I've assigned him to make civilians. We are gonna put a civilian committee together, the people who live in Broward County, that are gonna serve on our hiring committee, and you are gonna have input.
So if I understand that correctly, once they go through the protocol, the application, the evaluation, so on, the decision will ultimately, part of the folk, the group that helps make the decision, will include part of the civilian part of it?
They will be part of that group. As I look, you know, as I look at it, Craig, I would say this, I want to hear from, I want to hear from our citizens, I want to hear you tell our hiring board, "You know what? I want my community policed by him. I want her policing my community, or I don't want them policing my community." So it's gonna be really cutting-edge, and we're looking forward to it, and, you know, you could go on our website, and we're gonna be recruiting right here from this great church. So, thank you.
Sheriff, thank you. I want to come back, because I was a little uneven, so I'll do another here and then come back over.
This next one is about body cameras. What is the current plan to have body cameras on all officers who are on the streets, and what is the consequences for those who do not use them appropriately?
And if I remember correctly, thank you, that last check, BSO, was at about 50 or so, but you hope to get up to about 1,500?
Yeah, we've put, I've put out our first 50 body cameras at our expense over the past few months. By the next year, every deputy that works and interacts with citizens will have a body camera. You need to know what goes on out there, and I need to know what goes on out there.
And similarly, and then Congressman, similarly, I believe at Sunrise, you were still developing the protocols for it, or do you already have them in place?
We do. We've put in for 30 in next year's budget. We found, by talking to other departments, that body camera is a really good way of making sure that our police are being held accountable, but it's also a good way to get rid of complaints that may be not the way that people think it is. And you bring people in, you show them the video, and you say, you know, "Let's talk about this." Body cameras are a thing of the future, and there's no mistake about it. They are a positive for law enforcement.
Congressman, you want to follow up?
Just wanted to say, very briefly, the federal responsibility in that regard is to try to find additional funds, I'll undertake to do that. But when officers were shot very recently in Dallas, I called Sheriff Israel, and I suggested to him something else we can do with cameras. We can put cameras in the training room of police officers, so we will know how they are being trained.
Well, and that kind of follows up my question, just the process which came up over here, whether it's the psychiatric evaluation, or what types of screening, or when we hear sensitivity training and so on. I think the public would benefit from knowing how all of that comes together. Yes, Ms. Jill.
It would also be helpful to have some psychiatric training for some of us in elective office as well.
Amen. Let the church say amen.
Now, Congressman, I shouldn't promise we won't use that soundbite on the 10 o'clock news, but...
Pastor Victor Baptista of the Cavalry Chapel in Aventura says, "Since the current shootings, has the dispatch of officers changed to include additional lookout officers to cover in case of snipers?"
Who'd like to take that first? Sheriff? Chief?
During the week in the aftermath of the shootings in Baton Rouge and in Dallas, we did Bravo up our deputies. So we put two to a car, and then we let about a week go by, or two weeks go by, and then we felt we had a comfort level. Not that we can predict that a person's not gonna, a lone sniper, or a lone wolf assassin is gonna, in a repulsive, reprehensible way, try and take lives. But the bottom line is, we have to be vigilant, we have to be prepared, we have to be able to mitigate, we have to be able to respond well, but most importantly, we have to rely on our community. You hear police official after police official tell you all the time, "If you see something, say something. You're on social media more than us." You watch that person who's come home, you know, the last five years, and they come home from Publix with a bag of groceries, and now perhaps they came from one of the pawn shops, and they got a bag of bullets. This is something that we need to know about. So if we're gonna be safe, and we're gonna be able to mitigate, and we're gonna be able to keep our community safe, you are gonna be able to have to do so much to help us out. So as the citizens out there have our back, as we have yours, see something, say something, and let us know what you hear. Thank you.
Chief?
We did a little different. We doubled up our zones, where we put two cars in every zone, because we wanted the community to see the police cars. We didn't double them up in a car, but we doubled up the number of zones. We wanted the people to be reassured that everywhere they looked, they saw a Sunrise police car.
Thank you both. I want to get the mayors of Sunrise and Broward County involved, just to follow up a bit on that. So much of this is, it's homegrown, it's local. What's happening at the local level? It's nice to hear, and I have a couple of questions about the Black Caucus and some moves that you tried to make before the recess, and we'll get to that in a second, but, you know, all politics starts at home. So at the local level, what is it that can be done, that's being done, to help improve this relationship?
Well, first of all, as mayors, anywhere in the country, we're on the front line of this. But we also recognize that everyone in our community wants the same thing, right? They want to live in a safe community, they want to live so that their children can play in the front yard, unmolested by drugs and violence. They want their children to have educational hopes and employment opportunities. At the same time, we also recognize our police officers are being asked to fill the social fabric that's failed. They're asked to be drug counselors and mental health counselors, they're asked to intervene and find guns that have proliferated on the streets, and they have to do so much. We have to, as a community, begin to realize that respect, dignity, the golden rule, that we all want the same thing, and the key to that is getting, as the departments have done, is getting out in the community and seeing people eye to eye, because we do have a crisis of faith. And that crisis is that we don't have the faith that what we see in the worst of people is what we're gonna see in the next person, or that we have the faith that the best in what we see in us isn't in someone else. And the perceptions from the nationwide problem impact realities here. So it requires us to do, as the bishop has said, more than just a dialogue today, it is to get out in the community, and you know what? There's nothing wrong with a hug, right? There's nothing wrong with getting back to love and understanding that people want the best of their lives.
Mayor? Thank you, and thank you, Pastor Fernandez, for having this wonderful event. And before I answer the question, I just want to mention, I have three of my outstanding colleagues that I served with on the county commission that are here today, Commissioner Lois Wexler, Commissioner Beam Furr, and Commissioner Dale Holness. All three of them work incredibly hard for Broward County every single day, and I'm so thrilled...
hard for Broward County every single day, and I'm so thrilled to have them all three of them here. And before I answer that, I just wanted to touch on the body camera issue, if that's okay. Because I have an interesting perspective. A lot of the folks know, my brother, who is my best friend alive, is actually a sheriff's deputy. And when he was stationed in North Lauderdale, he was one of the original officers that Sheriff Israel's team decided should have a body camera. And I was very proud of that. And I asked him, and his name is Mark, I asked him, Mark, what do you think about wearing a body camera? Because I was really curious about it. Because I've always been in support of them. I know the community, the vast majority of the community has, but I wasn't sure how deputies and officers felt who were actually wearing them. And my brother looked at me, and he said, Marty, I like it. And the reason being is because it protects the public, but it also protects me as well as a sheriff's deputy. It helps me, because if something happens, there's always videotape there that can show that if somebody files a complaint against them, that it was bogus. And reverse, if a police officer or a deputy do something wrong, there's tape there showing that that happened. And that, I thought, was very compelling and very interesting, and I was glad to get his perspective. And when it comes to improving the relationship and the trust between the law enforcement community, and also with the community, I think things like this are truly awesome. The faith community actually is pretty wonderful. I was thinking about this when this was brought up before. You know, when you're a pastor, or you're a bishop, or you're a priest, or you're a rabbi, you're more than just a pastor, a priest, a bishop, or a rabbi. You're also a lawyer, a tax agent, you're also a psychologist. You're just about everything you could possibly think of. And folks in the community may not have the same amount of trust for politicians like us, or for law enforcement, as they will to their spiritual leaders. And when the spiritual leaders step up, like Pastor Fernandez and others, and they come together, and they bring relationships together, and they foster a great relationship between the community and your elected officials and law enforcement, that is a big step in the right direction. And that's why I'm so thrilled to be here, and I appreciate you all attending.
Thank you, Mayor. As we said, this is an important first step. I don't want the state attorney, Mr. Satz, to think that he's out of this. I do want to get a question, but in the event they don't get to, I have one for you two. So I'll give you one second. I want to make sure I hear from the audience, but I don't want you to think I've forgotten about you, because I haven't. Please.
This question is from Arthur, Arthur Joseph. All right, and this is a policy question. If a police officer stops you for a traffic violation, does he or she have the right to search you and your car?
So a procedural, what's like, sort of falls into the probable cause kind of thing, I guess, but...
I can answer that. Before a search, any kind of search, you have to have probable cause. And the stop has to be a valid stop. But I want to add something to what everybody said. Trust and understanding has to be earned. You just can't legislate it, and you just can't demand it. And I got to say that there are some good things that are really happening. I think the sheriff and the police chiefs really care about the perception and the lack of trust. We have to do away with the we and they. And I think the police chiefs and the sheriff understand that and want to do that. And as a result of Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz and my good friend Congressman Alcee Hastings, a lot of good has come from their task force. One thing we've done is we've gone out to the police academy. And just like when you go to speak to schoolchildren, they want to learn. The cadets at the police academy want to learn, and so do the instructors. And we told them, you know, in picking a jury, I always ask, has anyone ever been arrested? You see one or two hands, and then you say, has anyone ever had an unpleasant experience with a law enforcement officer that didn't amount to an arrest? And you see a ton of hands go up, both black and white. And that shouldn't be. So we went out to the police academy, defense lawyer, prosecutor, Eugene Pettis, who's the past president of Florida Bar, and we told them about our experiences, and what the community expects, and what they deserve. And that was a good thing. And when they get out into the police, actually work in the streets, their field training officers have to teach them the same thing that they learned in the academy. You can't have a situation where they say, forget what you learned in the academy, the streets are different. They're mean streets. You can't have that. They're not mean streets. You have to treat people with dignity and respect. And also, I got to compliment the Urban League. One of the ideas that came from Congressman Hastings and Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz is the sheriff and the police chief, John Brooks, they know how to deal with people. They're kind. What's going on with the rank and file officers? So the Urban League had patrol officers who work the street go in and talk to 12 kids, and the Urban League acts as facilitator, just like you. And they talk about, you know, their problems, what their perceptions are. And that's really what works. The patrol officer on the street and the kids working together to see that everybody wants to do the right thing.
Chief, and then I want to bring George into the conversation, because I want to go back to the question and the idea of probable cause in a second, and I want to bring you into that. But first, Chief?
Just real quick, one of the things that police officers make the biggest mistake is the initial contact. It's how they approach people. Do they approach people? Do they approach people with respect? Or do they say, hey, you, come here? And you know, one of the things that we're really trying hard, not only in my department, but all the other chiefs, when we talk, and is that initial approach, make it professional.
I wanted to follow up on the probable cause, because it's a fair question. It's, if I'm stopped, can you search my vehicle? Well, probable cause. Well, I don't think there's probable cause. Now, obviously, if there's a weapon on the backseat, or contraband, or something, that's another matter. But what's the probable cause? Can you walk us through that a little bit?
Well, here's what I tell most of my clients, if not all of my clients, and especially my young men, my young black men. When you're dealing with probable cause, and as Mr. Satz stated, the officer must have probable cause of reason to stop you. That could be any traffic infraction, tag light out, window tint too dark. It could be, if you look at the traffic code, it's pretty thick. When you go through magistrate hearing, and I was just there this morning, it's like a cattle prog. I mean, I got to be honest with you all. It's 99.9% of the time, when a person comes before that magistrate judge, he will find probable cause. So what does that really equate down to? If a police officer stops you, if he can write it up well enough, it's probably going to be probable cause. So what do I tell my young men? You got to start thinking, you got to start doing things that are smarter, doing things that are going to improve not only your life, but your relationship with police. Because you can't argue probable cause with a police officer in the middle of the night on Sichron. You just can't do that, you know?
It's probably a bad time to go through your constitutional rights. Probably a bad idea.
And I mean, so it really comes down to, if a cop feels like he has PC to stop you, he probably can prove at least to a judge initially that he does. So you're in this dilemma where I don't think you should have stopped me. I don't think you have PC. That's not the place all the time to have that argument. And I just want to add one thing, and I served in the Corps, and whenever there was an issue with someone that was under me, my staff sergeant would always come to me and say, rectify the problem. I would have to go to that person, and I would have to tell them what they need to do. I think the biggest thing we need to do here, and I really do challenge, I've spoken to the sheriff a couple of times, not in detail, and there are a few others here that can make it happen. I really, really, really would like to see the sheriffs, if we're up here for a reason, we're the 10%, the few, I really would like to see law enforcement go above and beyond in not putting so much on these young men and these people out in these streets. Because they just don't have the intellectual capacity at that time...
What do you mean, when you say putting so much on? What are you getting at?
When you have a young 16-year-old, who hasn't, whatever the reason, he's not responsible, he doesn't respect, whatever the case may be, you have to understand, he's not going to react like I'm going to react. He's not going to react like Congressman Hastings is going to react. He's going to react in the best way he know how, and it's probably not going to be the most positive way. And so what I would like to see is for the police to go above and beyond, even though the person may be cussing them out, but to go above and beyond, give them the benefit of the doubt, like they would others, let's be honest, and not be so quick to say they should have reacted this way, and so then I'm going to react this way.
I do want to get to a question, but I'd like to, well, Bishop, please, go.
Well, there's two sides of the story here. There's one side where there's probable cause, but what if, when there's not, I should say, but what if there is probable cause? Because for me, I have a personal encounter with a police officer. I was speeding. I had my two sons in the back of the car, a little bit, it wasn't even 10 miles over. The fact was, I was speeding. Well, he pulled up, and the first thing he said to me, going back to what you said, Chief Brooks, is how you speak to citizens. The first thing the police officer said to me, boy, give me your license and registration. Now, I agree with you, a 16-year-old who doesn't have a dad in the home, who has, you are going to cause a problem. Now, as a pastor, a law-abiding citizen, of course, I wanted to go home. I wanted to live. So I gave it to him, and he wrote me the ticket, and the next thing shocked me, instead of handing me the ticket, he threw it in my face. This is just one story of many. And I think what you're asking is, if the police officers, first of all, just respect citizens, even when they are wrong. We're not telling you not to execute the law and arresting us if we're doing wrong. Just do it in a humane way. That's all.
It's a follow-up to what Chief Brooks was saying, when he's looking for people, it's, if you know how to treat people with respect, the way you'd want to be treated, you'll be okay in your department.
But as my friend George said, don't fight it on the street. Make a complaint. Go to Internal Affairs, demand a complaint, demand that it be written up, and make the complaint.
Well, and see, now, we're hearing from the audience, and maybe we've got a follow-up question, because my, well, and I do want to get to the audience, but I think the reaction is, if I do that, is this going to lead somewhere? Because there is a sense that, whether accurate or not, that it's swept under the rug, no one ever hears about it again.
First of all, I'll look at...
And I guess, please respond, and then the state attorney.
Every single complaint I look at, every single one.
Repeat that again for me?
I look at every single complaint, every single one.
All right. Well, I wanted to hear the state attorney's view on this, and then we'll come back here.
You know, a lot of it isn't criminal. It's just discourteous, police off, and when I'm saying police officers, I think, as most of the people in this audience feel, as they clap for the officers are here, most of the officers are dedicated, hardworking men and women. But it's just like the sheriff said, in the legal profession, in your profession, in the law enforcement profession, you have some people that shouldn't be in that profession.
Agreed.
And the situation that the bishop described should never have happened anywhere to anyone ever. So what that officer did to the bishop isn't criminal. But why is he doing what he's doing? You think that's the first and only time he's done that?
Probably not.
And that's why when the sheriff said, when he walks and sees people who shouldn't work with him, he should have the ability to escort him out to a different profession. When you have a racist officer, you should be able to fire him. Especially when there's no question about it.
Ms. Allison?
Thank you. Unfortunately, the bishop's experience is my life, is the life of my community. Those things happen all the time. However, I would bet that you couldn't find two people in Broward County to say they have confidence in any law enforcement agency in Broward County. The process simply is not working for the citizens. We never get the benefit of the doubt. And whether you're, you know, you can check the statistics, unless you have video, and sometimes that doesn't even work. You just don't get an opportunity to have your voice heard, and there's no accountability. And that goes across the board for every law enforcement agency in Broward County. There's no teeth and no accountability there.
I think, and I do want to get, because I'm breaking my promise, I want more of your questions. I think one of the things, and the state attorney has touched on this, as did the sheriff, you look at the reports, and if there's discipline, or what have you, and I understand when we're talking about somebody's personnel file, but it might go a long way in terms of the public relations aspect of it, to let your community know, this is what happened, this is what we've done. Because very often, these stories happen, and nothing ever, we never hear anything ever again. And it just hangs out there in a negative way. Yes, please.
Yes, so that is the topic of the evening. I would tell you that 95% of these are the communities' interaction with police. I'm going to try and get through a couple of them. Paulette S. says, are periodic psych evaluations done on officers? If not, it's about time that they're done. And Juanita Topper says, if we continue to see police officers getting away with murder, how are we supposed to encourage young black men, or anybody else for that matter, across the country, that it's okay when they directly have a negative mindset about police officers?
Well, let's talk about that mindset. And Doctor, I apologize, it took me a while to get to you at Broward College. You work with young people from the community who are in school, and then we'll move around a little bit. How do we work with that? How do we combat that?
Allow me to use an illustration, perhaps, that hits home. Before people get married, a lot of time, they get premarital counseling. But in our situation, the police are getting a kind of training, but the community is not so sure exactly how to handle this marriage. And it is a form of marriage. And when a police officer goes into a community, it's not like they're going to somebody else's house. It is their community, even if they don't live there. It's a bond that is of trust that the students understand. While Broward College has over 60,000 students, one of the things that I believe, not just Broward College, but other, whether from kindergarten to high schools, like Piper High School, Hallandale, is that we need to engage in training students in this marriage. And also, one of the wonderful programs that started at the police academy is that we've embedded students into the academy to do what we call Cadet for a Day, Cadet for a Season. And it's amazing, when they come out of that, the insight they have into what the police cadets are learning. So I believe that as we're trying to build trust, one of the things to communicate to each other is that, just in the same way that we're asking, I may ask my wife to trust me, she's asking me to trust her. So in the same way that we're asking the police, for example, is asking us to trust them, they need to understand they're asking us to, there's a vice versa, reciprocal relationship there.
I'm going to come back over here, but I have a quick, and yes or no, please, or one sentence, when it came up earlier, the psychiatric evaluation of a prospective officer. I know you've got to qualify every so often physically with your weapon. Is there an occasional checkup on the psychiatric fitness, or is it just that one time when they get hired?
It's just a one-time thing, you know, it, yeah. If, if there are, as the public knows, there are labor contracts that are legal, and they prevail, and we have, you know, the men and women of the agency are bound by contracts that exist, labor contracts that we can't circumvent. However, if you bring something to our attention that shows an officer hasn't behaved in a manner he or she should have behaved in, there are fitness-for-duty evaluations that we are empowered to put our deputies through, and we do do that from time to time.
So if you have probable cause, you can subject them to another evaluation. If not, it's the one-time. All right. Thank you, sir. Yes.
All right, Craig. This one is from Lionel Session, and it actually echoes a lot of the questions I've seen. If stopped by a police officer, what's the safest procedure? Should I put my hands on the wheels? Should I take out my license? What do I do?
Well, Chief, since the sheriff had the last one?
Well, first of all, start out like I do. If I'm stopped, yes, sir, no, sir, yes, ma'am, no, ma'am. Just make sure that you're obeying the commands of the officer, whatever that officer tells you to do. If you're going to reach for your identification, whether it's in your purse, whether it's in, tell the officer, communicate, tell him or her what you're doing and why you're doing it.
I want to follow up briefly, and this ties into it, and this is for the members of our delegation and our visiting, but as former chair of the Black Caucus, last month before the recess, or maybe the month before it was, discussion of a measure, and I'll make sure I get this right, a bill that would give families of people killed the right, the right... the right, you don't have to wait for someone to authorize it, families of people killed the right to an independent investigation, an autopsy, and a prosecutor. That measure, well, let's, let's find out. That measure was introduced by the Congressional Black Caucus before the congressional recess. Where are we?
Uh, nowhere. I'm going to, I'm going to answer that question with some depth to it, but if I can say, first of all, I, I think, having come from Missouri and spent some uncomfortable times, days and nights in Ferguson, I can tell you that what Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz and Congressman Alcee Hastings are doing cannot even be done in many of the major cities in the country. You couldn't even have this kind of gathering. And so I think this is, I hope people here understand and recognize that you, however upset you might feel about community police relations, you're way ahead of a lot of these Al Green represents Houston, and I met with John Boehner, and surprisingly, he said, "I agree with you, we need to put some money in the budget for body cameras." Make a long story short, we were able to get $25 million in. The problem, which is not a, it's, $25 million is enough for Fort Lauderdale, but the problem, and I think the police are probably, if they haven't experienced it, they will. We were very proud, we got $25 million until my own police chief in Kansas City, Missouri, our state's largest city, said, you know, "I know this may embarrass you, but we're not going to apply for the money to get the body cameras." He said, "You can't do that, chief. It will embarrass me." I'm the one who was pushing to get it. So he said, "We can get the cameras, the problem is, we can't afford the storage. The storage costs three times the cost of the cameras. And so you can't, you can't do the storage. You gotta, you gotta store what you pick up on the cameras. And that cost is just prohibitive. And if the, if the police chiefs haven't, if they don't know it yet, if they will, you already know it." Okay, yeah. So-
Something like a million hours, I think, when you get all your cameras in place? Did I see that?
Yeah. We've had discussion with our county commission, and they've been very open and very receptive, and the cities that we police have also been very open and very receptive. So we think we've got a lot of cooperation, and we're looking forward to it.
But this, I didn't mean to cut you off, sir. Congressman Hastings, did you want to add to that briefly before we move on?
Well, I didn't want to add anything. I want you to know the gentleman talking. This is his fourth visit to our community, and he is the former mayor of Kansas City, Missouri. I had the good fortune of visiting with him in Kansas. He's also a minister, and to serve with him is just such a, a great privilege. And I wanted you to give him a round of applause for coming all the way over here to be with us. Thank you for that.
Fortunate to have you, and I look forward to probing a little bit more about what, I know it's not your district, but you're part of the congressional delegation, what was learned post-Ferguson. You hired a great police chief from our community, from Miami, to come on in, but I want to talk about that, but first, I want to get over here.
All right, Craig. We have one from a teenager, Justin Green. Can you stand, someone, Justin Green? This says, "If we do not like the way that police officers are dealing with us, are we allowed to call 911?"
We've seen those stories. And I guess, let me, let me take it to the counselor. We've seen those stories where they record it with their phone, and so on, so on. What do you recommend, counselor? I mean, I-
Sheriff, you gotta let, it might go now, I'm just playing. Can you call 911? You can, but they probably will already be there. I'm not kidding. I got pulled over one time, it was like five police cars, and I was, and it was just me, but anyway. But there is a, I'm not going to stay on this question long, because I, I think this is better suited for Ms. Ellison, the president of the Fort Lauderdale Chapter, N W A C P. There is a grievance, and it depends on the department, but you can file a complaint. Unfortunately, if you get stopped, and you're trying to call the police when you were stopped, that's probably not a good idea, because officers probably don't want you doing all this extra movement at a traffic, assuming it's a traffic stop. But there is a process. The best thing you can do, young, young man, wherever you are, it, where are you at? Okay. The, the best thing you can do, young man, is to comply, comply, and comply, and if all else fails, comply.
Doctor Raskin, did you, and then we'll follow.
Well, that was a good question. Another thing that we're doing in this school district is, we're entering to a partnership with the City of Fort Lauderdale Police Department, UCLA, the Advancement Project, and we're going to begin to do this implicit bias training. And a part of that is, we have to do a climate survey with our administrators, with our teachers, but also with our young people. Because a lot of times, we don't listen to young people. We don't ask them, how do they feel when they're being stopped by a police, and what's going on with them? So we're going to enter into this project with UCLA, with Dr. Goff, who you see a lot on MSNBC, who's done extensive work around this, to again, see how we can build those relationships and talk to our young people, because we don't want them to feel intimidated. We certainly don't want them to continue to die, because every time a young person dies, that takes away from our graduation rate, and it also takes intellectual capital from our community. And finally, a very bold thing that we're going to start doing this school year is, another school board member, Ms. Richard Levinson, has led a phenomenal debate program across the county. So in that debate program, our children have asked us if they could begin conversations about racism. And I remember, like, many moons ago, maybe about 15 and 16 years ago, Commissioner Lavoy Williams was doing those conversations, and they were not too favorable. But we're going to start doing those conversations, because the young people have requested that they want to have these conversations, because they believe that they can teach us how to get this right.
Jerry, get something real quick?
Yes, please. Just a couple of things, and I see your format, the way it's going. One thing I'd like to get a comment on, probably from one of the guys in law enforcement, is the citizens that sit in the living room, call up and tell the police department, 911, there's a guy walking down the street with a gun, and it's a BB gun or a pellet gun. How do these people die? This should not happen. I don't know who these people are, make the phone calls, but you can't put someone's life at danger. So I don't know if I should be angry at the police when it's a BB gun or the fool that called up. I, I don't know, but I would like to know what happens when you get that call and says, because the guy in a Walmart just bought the BB gun, he's dead. You saw what happened to Tamar Rice, kid playing with a, with a plastic gun, he's dead. Because somebody called up with bad information. I know it's a tough situation. The other thing is, I hear them say a lot, if you see something, you say something. And as we've all agreed here tonight, give me 1,000 police officers, I would guess 990 of them are probably great men and women and great cops, but there's 10 of them that suck at that job. So my thing is, as a public, when you see June bugs selling drugs and robbing and stealing and killing, you want us to say something. So to the police departments, when you see something, do you say something? Because there's no way you've got cops sitting around doing these bad things. They do it, you know, it's, it's what they do. But do a cop realize that this guy is making stops like this, yelling, calling people boy, and yelling? Do a cop ever see this happening and then just say something? Do it, do they get the same instruction, see something, say something?
Chief Brooks, a quick response, and I got a question.
The very first person that I fired in 2007, when I became the chief in Sunrise, many people came up to me and said, "Yeah, he was no good, you should have fired him." You know, "He was no good." And I said, "You need to stand up and say that more often. You're absolutely right, it needs to be done."
You know, and you need to work immediately, because if you're doing these kind of things, we don't know it. You see what I'm saying? Don't make that be a secret. If, if this is happening, it's got to leak out, call the PR. I'm just saying, because I don't know these kind of things happen in real life, and I'm sure it does, you just said so. But that's got to get out there, you know, so, and, and don't make it a secret. So we, we need to know this, and we need at one time to see if a police department or officer will really stand up and say someone is wrong in what they did, mistake, we all make them intentionally, I don't know, but you got to say it. Let us know that you feel our pain, and you understand what we're going through. Just say it publicly on TV, Craig them, they do it all the time. Just say these good things. Let us know, this is how you get confidence. You got, I got to feel like, if this guy do something wrong to me on a stop, that he's going to be punished. He's not going to say, well, the rules say he can slap you upside the head because he thought you were going to slap him. See, that's pappy cop. So if you're doing these kind of things, you need to get that out there, too. So I can feel like a cop's going to be punished if you do something wrong.
Congressman, I hate to interrupt, but somebody's got a flight to catch, and I want to interrupt for just a moment, because we're grateful that you were able to come. I want to give you the mic for just a moment, because I know you have to excuse yourself, but, and I, had I known you were leaving, I would have gotten some of this earlier. I apologize. You bring, Congressman, a unique experience, being part of the Missouri delegation. You, you referenced Ferguson and so on. Your parting thoughts, you've already said how progressive Broward is relative to your experience there, but what would you want us to have going forward as we leave the auditorium tonight? Your final thoughts?
Well, the legislation we were pushing that, that the, the leadership refused to put on the floor is, was the motivation behind the sitting at the Capitol. Members of Congress sitting on the floor with, with your congresspeople, you know, Congressman Hastings has a bad knee, so it, you know, it's hard to sit on the floor, but-
That legislation I asked about, 10 minutes ago.
Yes. And, and, and so that legislation has to be approved by January, by December, or we have to start over. And, and it would give, for example, I think the best part of it is that if there is an, an incident, that a special prosecutor would be required, because we found that when prosecutors and police work together every day, which they have to do, it's, it's going to be difficult for the prosecutor to, to in fact, go against someone with whom he or she is working every day. So we, we are pushing on that. Let me, when, when, when the Ferguson situation occurred, Lacy Clay, the congressman from the area, was, was out of the country. So he called me and said, "You got to go to Ferguson," which is one, I mean, I wasn't, you know, looking for a vacation spot, but I, I went to Ferguson, and it's one of the most amazing things, and I think one of the tragedies is, is if we don't learn from every incident that occurs. Ferguson is a city of 22,000 people, and 2013, the year before the incident, the city gave, gave 33,000 traffic tickets. Now, that's one ticket per resident and 10,000 for visitors. And, 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 and when you have, when you have that kind of contact, you're going to have a problem. They only had two African-American police departments with a 75% black city, and none of them lived in the city. So it's almost like, please let's make something happen. My, 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 my final comment is that I, I, there are a lot of things that need to be done. I mean, we don't think that it's too much to ask, that we take people the FBI believes to be dangerous and put Lacy on the terrorist list. We, we think we ought to keep them from having guns. We can't even stop that. So I think the political tribalism in Washington is doing damage not only to law enforcement every day, but to the country, and when you, and, and, because we're not getting anything done. But, but the, the, the other sad part about that is that, you know, you let good people, they go up and they try to get things done, and they can't get things done, and, and people are understandably upset. This is a serious problem, you're dealing with it in a way that nobody else seems to be dealing with it around the country. I appreciate my colleague Debbie Wasserman Schultz for getting me down here, and I appreciate, Bishop, I still want to preach here.
Please. Congressman, Congressman Emanuel Cleaver, thank you for coming. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, Congressman, for making the trip. Okay, okay, Jill, I want to get to a question, because my people are giving me the eye. Jill, what do you got?
All right, Jeremiah would like to know, as a corrections officer, he says, as a corrections officer, "I feel all police should become a corrections officer first, so they can truly understand how to deal with people they will encounter on the street." They need to develop interpersonal skills. Ginger Lingo says, "Trust is important, and having more functions like this, not around election seasons, could work for us." And Tea and Shade.
Let me, hey, Doug, I can answer that.
All right, Congressman, go ahead.
Debbie, Debbie and I started our task force, force, two years ago, and it was not during election season, and it has been meeting regularly. The sheriff, the state attorney, the young man from the community college, ministers and others with regularity. But I wanted to offer some-
Briefly, Congressman, because I've got people waiting, please.
Let me be brief. We need police independent review boards, period, okay? And all of these mayors that are here, you need to sign memorandum of understanding with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, as many cities have, that when a person dies at the hands of a police officer or in a jail, that the FDLE can come in, independent of the people in the local community.
That was a setup for the mayors, but I need you to keep it short for me, please. Mayor Kier, first.
Well, thank you very much. I was thinking about this, and I was looking around the room, and I'll tell you what, I actually believe this is all about trust. And I actually think, and, you know, Hillary Clinton recently in a debate said that it takes a village to bring trust. It takes everybody. It takes law enforcement, it takes the community, it takes everyone. But what I'm actually thinking about, and I was thinking about this the entire time, I think it's most important that law enforcement initiates that trust and earns the respect and the trust of the community, and I'll tell you why. When Sheriff Israel was elected, he did a couple of things that I thought were kind of interesting. The first thing he did, tell me if I'm wrong, Scott, he decided to take away all the tint on the windows of the, of the vehicles that the police drive. And he told me he did that because he wanted the community and the folks to be able to see in there, so they didn't just see black shade and they couldn't see in. He also, like many of our other law enforcement folks, and chiefs and cities, have instituted civil citation programs for students and for kids, so that they don't get arrested and their lives aren't ruined. And on the county commission, we actually passed an excellent ordinance that gives police officers the ability to issue civil citations in lieu of arresting people if they have a misdemeanor amount of marijuana. And the reason I bring that up is because it's the leadership that gives the direction to the folks below as to how to apply it. And when we passed that ordinance, I did a little bit of research. And what I learned in Broward County was that whites and African-Americans utilize marijuana at the same rate. Yet 80% of the people arrested for having a misdemeanor amount of marijuana are African-Americans. And there was even a police chief that went on the news and said, "Yeah, we go and target folks in those communities. That's what we do." And I, and all I thought about was, if folks targeted me and my family and my communities, I wouldn't trust law enforcement either. And that's why it's so important that folks like Sheriff Israel, who works very, very hard, and by the way, I read in the paper that he is going to start instituting our program, and the first thing he said to me was, "Marty, I support this, but I support it across the board, that everybody throughout the community is going to get a civil citation equally." Well, it's important that that same directive is given by all of the other police chiefs, mayors, and city commissioners and others, because it starts at the top. And when the top fosters an environment of treating everybody equally, then the deputies and the officers and everybody else are going to fall in line, and that's how you earn the trust of the community.
Mayor, thank you. I want to get to the Congresswoman, and you set it up for Mr. Satts, because I'm curious about, it's the prosecution of these cases. If it's an equal amount, then, but, but Congresswoman, first.
To follow up on what Mayor Kier said, at the federal level, what we need to do is address mass incarceration, because we have the highest rate of incarceration in the entire world. Even though we are the most advanced nation, we, we have to make sure that we focus investing resources on mental health counseling, on- sure that we focus investing resources on mental health counseling, on diversionary programs, on minor, minor crimes, and ensure that people who really need to be locked up, prosecuted, and, and put in prison, that the most dangerous people are reserved for incarceration, and that we redirect and help make people, make sure that people can get their lives back on track for lesser, lesser crimes, and that's the direction that we need to go in.
Thank you Congressman. I have a question here, but, I did want to hear from the state attorney about this, because it's your office that prosecutes these, these drug cases, we're talking about here.
And that's why we are in favor of mandatory civil citations across the board, it shouldn't just be local, it shouldn't be just one, the sheriff's office, and not a city, it should be across the board, and it should be a state law for everyone, that civil citation for possession of marijuana, and I would extend it to some misdemeanors, to give people an opportunity not to have that on the record, and that's why we do these expungement and sealing workshops, to help people get it off their record, the Promise Program that Marsha Ellison from the NAACP was so instrumental on, where kids in school don't get expelled, they don't get arrested, there used to be, and Marsha, you remember this, there used to be a zero tolerance for someone, a kid, who commits an offense in school, and they were arrested, and you know what happens, they get expelled, you get expelled from school, you're not learning, it's wrong, so now they have an opportunity to commit three minor offenses, they go to a program, and the recidivism rate has gone down considerably, what is it, 90% are successful now, Marsha, in the schools? So, that's a, that's a great thing, so, you know, that, that's what, that's what's happening, that, you know, and I think it, a lot has to do with Marsha Ellison, getting together with different agencies in the county, and I can't stress enough, and I've seen it, when Congressman Debbie Wasserman Schultz and Congressman Alcee Hastings, when he said two years ago, they started this thing, it's helped in schools, we went to Dillard, we went to Hallendale, here's a good witness for us, to, to say how impactful that was, and Rosalynn Osgood, when she testified before the grand jury, and I'm not gonna give away grand jury testimony, but she was saying how important it is to get enough money to feed kids, you know, and there's not enough for that, and when it goes to cameras, we shouldn't have the excuse, we don't have enough money, it should be there.
Thank you, Mr. Satts, I have a question here.
All right, this one is from Karan Hazel, this is a buzzing one for the community, shouldn't it be a procedure to pull your taser on unarmed men versus your gun?
So as a matter of routine procedure, one versus the other first, Sheriff?
The question was to pull your taser?
Versus your gun.
Yeah, well, a taser's a tool, a nightstick's a tool, your, your, your language is a tool, a firearm's a tool, there's that old Indiana Jones movie, you don't bring a knife to a gunfight, when a police officer is, is doing things properly, I'm not talking about the ones who are rogue, and those few that Congressman talked about, but when a police officer's doing things the way he or she should be doing, the force he or she used is not the decision of the police officer, that is based on the suspect that they're trying to take in, if every suspect would say, when a police officer said, put your hands behind your back, you're under arrest, and they would comply, there would be no force, there would be no force, if they, if they, if it was done like that, a taser is, is to be used when a less, when you're in a less lethal environment, if a person has a firearm, or a person is about to take a life, you're not gonna be able to use a taser, it's just, it's just unfortunate.
And, well, in the moment, well, if you have a question, we've got our folks floating around, trying to get through them as many as possible, so in, in other, in that moment, it's, it's, it's a judgment of that moment.
Right.
I mean, there's, there's a protocol, there's a procedure, but it's, it's in that moment.
Right, we, we teach at the Broward Sheriff's Office, if we do have to use a firearm community, we teach, you can't shoot at what you think, you have to shoot at what you see, if you don't see it's a firearm, or you don't see it's a gun, you cannot discharge your weapon, it's that simple, the force used is incumbent, it's incumbent upon, you know, the, the officer, he has to justify what he or she did, so, you know, as well he should.
Thank you Sheriff. Yep, Jill?
I have several.
Okay, it's, we have questions, I mean, we've, we've got some good statements, but I'd like to hear some good questions.
Yeah, Asa Shaw, Scott Israel, you stood with Trayvon Martin's family to condemn stand your ground, a couple of weeks ago, one of your officers got offered killing Jermaine Mahan using stand your ground, will you denounce it now? Asa, where are you? Asa?
Here.
Sheriff Israel, do you want to answer?
Can you just repeat the question?
Basically, he was saying that when, that you stood with Trayvon Martin's family to condemn stand your ground, a couple of weeks ago, one of your officers got offered killing Jermaine McBean using stand your ground, and then he said, will you denounce it now, what, stand your ground, will he denounce stand your ground now?
Yeah, I stood for the, most of the community knows this, years and years ago, when it wasn't popular, I stood shoulder to shoulder, still do, with Tracy Martin, the dad of Trayvon, and said, stand your ground is wrong, it needs to be changed, it needs to be repealed, we want less, lesser confrontations in Broward County, not more confrontations in Broward County, I'm a sheriff, I'm a law enforcement executive, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not a judge, the decision that made in that courtroom was made by a judge, it has nothing to do with me as a sheriff, and it has nothing to do with law enforcement, I, I say publicly right here, right now, as I always said, stand your ground needs to be changed, we need to have less confrontation, not more confrontation in Broward County.
And as you know, that's, that's state law, that's a law in the state of Florida, so, that's a question, if we had somebody from the legislature here, it'd be a good up, up here, a good opportunity to address that, I do want to get to your follow up, yep.
Did, did somebody want to address that?
Yep.
Okay, do you believe that police training needs to be addressed, isn't training, oh, you mentioned earlier that training only happens once, and they want to know why, doesn't it happen continuously, if you find a bad seed, you know, why isn't there some training involved with them before something bad happens?
Yeah, I think it was that the training continues, the psychiatric evaluation is, is when they're hired, unless there's probable cause to do it again.
And then probable, you know...
Okay, um, what else do we have?
We have from John Boomer, what training programs are being put in place to address racism within the force among African-Americans?
Sergeant, sensitivity training, you're part of recruiting, and, I want to get your title, and you're, you're the recruitment supervisor, personnel, so this would seem to fall under your purview, can you talk about that a little bit?
With, with sensitivity training, what needs to happen is, officers need to be a part of the community, community needs to be a part of the police department, we need to separate law enforcement as a group, and community as a group, and just make it a community, if we make it a community, just one community where everybody interacts with each other, we can get to be more sensitive to each other's needs, if, if we as a police department are sensitive to the community's needs, the community will also be sensitive to our needs, it's, it's the back and forth, we, we just need to work together, we need to understand each other, we can't have this adversarial type relationship, that's been festering for a while, and, yes, it has been festering, it's uncomfortable, but we need to, this is a good start, we're, we're talking about it.
To the point of the question, Ovi, is there room for fine tuning or adjusting the, the recruitment process, the screening process, is, is there room for that, I mean, I'd imagine yes, but...
There's always room for improvement of anything, if there are suggestions to be offered, we'll take the suggestions, one of my things is, if we can get more people from the community to apply with the police department, more people from the community to apply for, with the police department, that'd be wonderful, then we won't have to go outside looking for people outside the community, if people come in looking to apply with us, encourage them, the bishop, can mention it in church, be a part of the police department, we're, we're always looking for good people.
And you set that up for me, I want to go back to members of the religious community here, because as is so often, particularly now, it's, you're called upon to try to, to bridge the gap, and, and very often, it's the only means to do that, this is a hugely important first step, but you can hear where, where we are, Pastor, what else can we be doing, what else can we look to from you, to deal with some of the skepticism here, to deal with some of the distrust here, we'll begin with you, please.
Yeah, I think for most people, as they watch the news and see social media, it's very paralyzing, and the more you watch, and the more you see, the, either the more angry you get, the more hopeless you get, the more sad you get, so, so part of our role as pastors in this community, and not just pastors of our churches, but pastors of the city, is to say, how, how do we have these conversations, so, one of the things that we encourage our church to do, a couple of weeks ago, was find someone who's not like you, they don't look like you, they're from a different background, and have dinner with them, open your house, and have a conversation, that's something everyone here can do, now if you can't find someone who's not like you, then, then you need to look in the mirror and say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna knock on the door of my neighbor who speaks a different language, or is a different color, or he's in law enforcement, and I'm not, and I'm gonna ask him, help me to understand your world, and, and people that say, you know, we just talk, 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 that doesn't help, I mean, if you were married, and you said to your wife, hey, talk, 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 doesn't do anything, that would not go well for you, and, talking is a way to enter someone else's world, and, as pastors, we have to enter each other's world, Bishop Fernandez and, and Dr. Davidson, we're starting to talk and have these conversations, so we can enter each other's world, because if we know each other, we'll treat each other differently.
And I think as Bishop Fernandez says, it's time to bring the various sects of the religious community together, but, Dr. Davidson, I wanted your thoughts to follow up on, on him, please.
As I, as I've been listening to the whole dialogue and discussion, to, to listen to what Pastor Doug says, yes, that is a great idea to invite someone into your home, but when I look at the broader audience tonight, the people that look like Pastor Doug, have to go into Sister and invite Ray Ray with gold in his mouth, to his house, and, and what he is saying is right, but the reality of it is, this, this is a beautiful picture and model of what we need to work on, but the real, real truth of the matter is, when you start to think about what Congressman Debbie Wasserman Schultz just said about changing the prison system, but when the prison system is privatized, and the state of Florida has a contract that they're gonna guarantee a 90% occupancy rate, it's gonna be hard to, to convince Ray Ray that you're not trying to lock him up when you target him in the community for the same thing that little John is now gonna get, get tied up with, so there has to be a real authentic discussion that says this, a police officer who lives in plantation, but is a police in the 33311 zip code, will not understand the 33311 zip code, and that's the real discussion that we have to have, so, I'm gonna be honest, tonight, I had a great deal of trepidation because of the timing of this, I, I agree with Bishop Fernandez, he is doing what we need to, we need to do, and that's, that's phenomenal, and all of us need to be here, but, we're gonna have to strip off all of our political clothes, all of our clergy collars, all of our, whatever, and we're gonna have to walk into the street, and let that, let, let me, let me be real, I, I, I'm gonna talk like I talk, we're gonna have to let that cat know that he has gold in his mouth, he has his pants sagging, but he's not necessarily a bad guy, that's just his culture, and you can't be afraid of him based upon his cultural ideology, and it's gonna be hard to develop that trust, when everybody, when, when there is a sewer, a homicide that's been stated of a person, but nobody's convicted of a homicide, and in any other situation, when there is a homicide, there's usually a conviction of a person who kills a person, and that, that's no reflection on any particular law enforcement officer, but, it's, it's hard to develop trust, and what I had to do personally, is to leave our church, that's considered a bourgeois bougie church, I had to put my jeans and my shoes on, and my, and my shirt, and walk into the community, and, and grip up the boys, and let them know, I'm here for you, I'm real with you, and guess what, I'm gonna be an advocate for you, but by me, by me advocating for you, when I go to the law enforcement, you gotta clean up your act too, so it's, it's duplicity, both of us have to do it right, so I've been very quiet, silent, because I'm just attentive to all this going on, but I do understand, we have a real issue in our nation, and if you are a black person, let me keep it real, I'm 40 years old, I'm a black man, right here on this stage, I'm okay, but if I get in my car tonight, take this suit off, and ride with my tinted windows and my luxury car, and I get pulled over, they don't know I'm Pastor Davidson, they know me as boy, they know me as Marcus, so, it's a real issue, and I have friends who don't look like me, that they don't necessarily get treated like me, because they're not me, and it's very difficult for us to have this discussion, because you don't know what it's like to be a black man, until you walk in the shoes of a black man, it's not an easy task.
And, thank you, Dr. Davidson, and, as, as, as we, as we said at the outset, the whole idea in beginning this conversation, is to try, just for a minute or two, to walk in somebody else's shoes, and I think you, you summed that up eloquently, Jill, you've got, we've got time for a few more questions, so let's, let's, let's get to them, Jill.
Did Jerry Rushman want to make a point before, did you, I probably was passing the mic, okay, go ahead. Dr. Yana Blaze says, how can community healthcare centers be more aware to help and improve the relations between patients and law enforcement, and how can we identify officers who perceive people of color as threat to eliminate biases?
That's a, a lot there, let's see, the community healthcare, we'll start that, let's, well, Mayor, community healthcare?
I, I don't know about community healthcare, but I do want to go to what the pastor just said, a couple of weeks ago, we popped up some tents and barbecues at 68th and Sunset Strip, and did a barbecue, an impromptu spontaneous barbecue in the neighborhood, and importantly, the cadets, our police explorer program, they're really free labor, but they were part of the barbecue, right, after it was done, the neighborhood came out, and it was everybody, pants dragging, gold teeth, hair, and I said afterwards, I gathered everybody, I said, you need to remember this moment, every one of those people loved being here, and they loved being with you, they are you, it doesn't matter what they're wearing, it doesn't matter what they look like, and if you carry that forward, and remember that, you will be a great police officer, we need to do more of that, we do need to be out in the community, and we need to recognize that we have to break these barriers down, it is not just about, are we gonna have FDLE, or we're gonna have this, we have to recognize that that's the crisis, my partner at my law firm, he is an African-American, he has sons, and he's given them the talk, that should not happen, and he gives them the talk, not to avoid the ticket, but so they come home alive, we have to recognize that perceptions are reality, and we can no longer squelch this dialogue, we have to not only talk, we have to listen.
All right, thanks Mayor, Carleen?
How can the code of silence under police officers be addressed better, many police officers are aware of the bad apples, but they're afraid to speak up.
Chief, you addressed this a bit earlier, you offer some thoughts on that?
Well, first of all, I, I think it's very important that that starts with training, and making sure that, well, hiring, and then training, I think if you hire the right people, the people that'll stand up and say, no, that's not correct, I'm not gonna allow that in my presence, if you hire those right people, if you train people, what to do, of how to do it, how to report it to a supervisor, how to report it to Internal Affairs, I think that's also another first step.
Thank you, I'm gonna cut off the sheriff, I apologize, but I want to get to a few more of these before we run out of time, Jill.
Ms. Sims wants to know, the Black Lives Matter Alliance of Broward has worked with BSO for years, why weren't they invited to be a part of this event?
Bishop Fernandez, maybe you can take up that?
Well, everyone was invited, no one was excluded out of this event.
Ms. Sims, where are you?
Everyone was invited.
Ms. Sims, my assumption is gonna be that she is somehow involved with, okay, she's, thank you Ms. Sims, Tim Franco, okay, no.
Carleen's got one here, well, I'll go back and forth while you search for another, Carleen?
What if anything can be put in place to determine whether police's character, I think we've addressed this already, discriminating against African-Americans, we've talked about the racism?
More in the screening, yes, Marsha?
I think that one of the things we...
I think that one of the things we ought to realize, and we recognize this after the Fort Lauderdale situation, that it is not against the law for officers to call us the N-word, all those other words. There is no policy that's recognized that, so if there's no policy, that means even FDLE and their sanctioning commission is saying it's okay. That's what it says to my community. We went, we, the NAACP and others, went to the commission. When we got there, we have Mike Satz's letter saying that these officers in that particular case should be decertified, a letter from Chief Frank Adely, a letter from the chief of the chiefs. And because it is not important enough to be addressed, now, if you, anything, if you went home and say, had sex with your wife while you were on duty, you could be decertified for that. But sending a racist video, calling us the N-word, driving down Sistrunk Boulevard, saying N-words everywhere, I'm looking for him, I dream about him, that's okay. So there wasn't, when the time came in January, to make a statement to the commission, to say, we, the chiefs of police and we, the sheriffs, believe that this is something that should be addressed, the language should be changed, so that if an officer exhibits racist behavior, they ought to be terminated and they ought to lose their certification. We couldn't find one in Broward County to say something. There was a one chief in Hialeah that said, this is wrong. The rest of the folks said nothing. They looked at Fort Lauderdale's letter, the chief's letter, and the state attorney's office. So unless law enforcement stands up and said, this is wrong, and we think that they ought to be not a member of our law enforcement staff, they ought to not be certified, then we are, we're not talking serious right here. We need to be able to do something about it, hold these people accountable.
Sheriff, briefly, do you want to address the, it's the issue of vocabulary? You know, words can be abusive, but when it comes to termination and so on, and you touched on that a little earlier.
Well, I certainly agree with Marsha completely, and I know for a fact that Mike Satz and Frank Adely did write those letters and did ask that their certification be removed. And FDLE, you know, we talk about FDLE all the time, and they're a great agency, but they're not the end-all-be-all. We talk about them coming to town and handling every investigation. Yet they're the very group that allowed, you know, that didn't pull the certification. But, you know, we came here tonight to have a dialogue and a conversation, and what can we do better as police, and what could the community do better working together? Well, let me tell you what we could continue to do and we could do better. Our civil citation program, you know, the mission of the Broward Sheriff's Office today is to measure our success by the kids we keep out of jail, not the kids we put in jail. That's what we're, the sheriff before me, his last year in office, 68 civil citations were issued. We're coming up on 2,000, 2,000 youngsters who are not going to jail and having opportunities to stay out on the street. And let me say that, with all due respect to my friend Bishop Fernandez and Dr. Davidson and the clergy and principals and coaches and teachers and police, we could talk about getting kids better, you know, and integrating better with our children, but at the end of the day, let's not forget this, the most important person in any child's life are And parents, if you're out there, you need to take charge of your homes. You're the boss, not these kids. I just want to follow one quick thing. We talk about this all the time, nobody supports child abuse or abuse of any kind, nobody supports that. But let me tell you something, parents, Chief Brooks is up here, the sheriff of Broward County is here, and I'm telling you this, if you gotta spank your kid to take charge of your home, you spank your kid.
All right. I am reminded of the time, I've got time, before we move on to what we're doing from here, but I want to get in one more from each, if I can, and please, in the interest of trying to keep the time, brief answers if you can. Yeah. I think we're getting a question.
Okay, yes. My dear friend, where are you going? Howard!
Let's hear it.
Give it up and help me, Howard. Come on, babe.
Thank you. Craig, you're doing an awesome job. Sheriff, it's good to see you. My congressman, Alsie, my good friend Debbie, as well. I'm gonna ask you guys the same question I did when I attended the group the very first time we met. And this, I'm gonna ask for the spiritual community to join in. One of the things that I've learned in my growth as a child of God is that before any change ever occurs, confession must take place. Without confession, there is no change, it is political. Now, what's very important is, this isn't a matter of a few bad apples, every profession has them. This has been systemic for 50 years. When my office was able to get the raw data, if you are a young black man and you leave your house, if you're walking on the street in Fort Lauderdale, you will be stopped by police for not walking on the sidewalk, even if there is no sidewalk. And the amount of people that were arrested for that, 96% were black. In the city of Fort Lauderdale, if you ride your bicycle and the registration isn't there, you can be stopped and your bike seized. 94% of the people that that law was used were African American. With seat belts, when people are stopped in the city of Fort Lauderdale for that offense, 70% were African American. I believe that all the people here are really here for the right reasons, I think your hearts are right. But to get real, somebody from law enforcement needs to stand up and say, we're sorry what we've done to poor black communities. The reason... The real reason is, law enforcement acts differently in poor black neighborhoods. When you come into my neighborhood, nobody would ever knock my wife on her butt and run into my kid's room and search through their drawers. That happens all the time in the northwest section and Pompano. Here's the point, black lives matter, blue lives matter, but if there's going to be a healing, we have to get real and admit what we have done as a community for 40 years, and then we can move on to great horizons, a great country, because we all love this country, and we are all God's children. Thank you.
That's my friend right there.
I think that might be...
Craig, you seem to be looking for rejoinder. There's a, I can go a step further than Howard. We've never gotten an apology for slavery in this country.
Well, that's, that's true, and that's a conversation for a much larger forum than here, in a few hundred miles north, 1,000 miles north. Howard raises some points, I think we'll end it with that statement from Howard. Sheriff, chief, how would you like to respond to some of what you heard there?
Well, as I started speaking, Howard is right, law enforcement makes mistakes, we treat people improperly, we disrespect people at times, but at the end of the day, I feel, you know, law enforcement, we're the same people that shop with you at Publix, we root for the same, our kids play on the same high school football teams, we go to churches with you, we're sitting next to you in church right now. The police officers and the deputies throughout our country that do things wrong, we want to know who they are. I'll publicly apologize for any misconduct that our deputies, and I'm sorry that it You know, Bishop's story, and I'm not gonna go into any more than that, but Bishop's story about the police officer who called him Boy and threw the ticket in his face, you know, Bishop probably wouldn't go any further than this, but he actually saw that deputy in this very church at my swearing-in ceremony. And when Bishop told me about that story, I mean, how embarrassing it is, here you have a man of God who's trying to help you, every step of the way has my back, my front, my side has my six, and he tells you that story. I mean, it's embarrassing, it's hard to deal with, and I'm, Bishop, I'm sorry it happened, I really am.
Chief, we'll give you the last word for this moment. Anything you'd like to add to the sheriff?
Yeah, I just want to echo what the sheriff said, because, you know, we have bad cops, and we gotta get rid of them. We gotta make sure that we do everything in our power, that if there is a bad cop, that we step forward and do the right thing on that. So I think that's important to do.
I like, at this moment, this is where we move to what is described as the resolution, because we're grateful that this panel of now 17, 18 people came out to be a part of this. This is a hard topic, this is tough. And as we heard the Missouri congressman say, the fact that we're here and we're talking, it's our home, we live here together, and it's in our best interest, all of us, to find a way to make this better. And it's all well and good to come and talk, and then go home, and it never happened. But this, we hope is gonna be different, and that's this portion of the program where we briefly talk a little bit about what we want to do going forward. Hopefully, more of this, more conversation. And here's where I'm gonna turn it on me, well, not me personally, but the media, because we are part of this. And we can do a better job of telling you about your community. I'm glad that you watch Channel 7, it keeps me employed, thank you for that. We can do a lot better, we can provide a better mirror on South Florida. So starting tonight, there's a reason why we have the catchphrase, "Hope and Healing", with our new graphic and all that, because starting tonight, and fairly often on 7 News broadcasts, whenever you see that graphic appear, we're gonna tell a story. The story that maybe used to get buried or wasn't the big story of the day, now you'll know where to find it. We're gonna have one tonight at about 10:30. And this is where police officers are in the community doing good things. They're working with kids, they're working in schools, we're gonna talk about some of the programs the mayor, the Urban League, NAACP outlined on stage. I heard four or five really good stories here that we haven't told you about. We've told you all kinds of stories, and those kinds of stories will still be around, but we're gonna work harder to give you a balance, so we talk about hope and healing. That is our resolution at 7 News going forward. And as my boss knows, I can be a little bit of a pain in the you-know-what. So when this conversation came up, and I jumped at the chance to do this, because I spend a lot of time in the community, and when friends of mine say, how come you don't talk about this, or how come you didn't share that, sometimes I don't have a good answer. Now I don't have to worry about it, because I can tell them, tune in for this week's Hope and Healing. We actually, just today, I went to my boss and asked her, and she gets things done, that's why she's the big boss, I asked her, people in the audience here might have stories for Hope and Healing that we can share with the community. You might have ideas, now you can share them with us. Online, you can email me, I'll get it, others will get it, and we're gonna try to do these as often as possible, because that's part of the conversation. We have to keep talking, or we're not gonna go anywhere. I believe, and I'm gonna talk about it on the 10 o'clock news tonight, because I'll be here, hopeandhealing@wsvn.com, it's easy, that logo, hopeandhealing@wsvn.com. And we're gonna tell those stories. So that is what we're doing, because I understand, and I think it's a fair criticism, that when we come into the neighborhood to cover the bad news, to cover the crime, and then we leave, that doesn't always help anybody. We need to be part of the solution, we need to be part of the good stories, and that's what we're committed to doing, starting tonight. Also, I'd invite the sheriff, Pastor Bishop Henry, because they're gonna come up and talk about their resolutions going forward as well.
Before I talk about my resolutions, there's something else you could do. There's a lot of great people in the audience, but there's two great people that I want to acknowledge, Judge Ken Gillespie and Judge Alona Holmes. If your ears were burning today at Century Village, Howard and I were talking about both of you, and community, we have 100 judges, six of them are black. We need more black judges, and we need to keep them on the bench. My resolution is to understand this, America where we are today, we're not gonna heal. We are not gonna heal without the faith-based community. If he's not gonna do it, it's not gonna happen. I want to thank Bishop as the shepherd of this house, when you called me a few weeks ago, and I just can't believe it came to fruition like it did. Thank you, congressman, thank you, congresswoman, thank you for being here. Marsha, the panel, amazing panel, I appreciate them, I know you appreciate them, and, you know, I'll conclude, in a church, I'll conclude with scripture, when he's with you, who could be against you?
Wow. Something amazing is about to happen here, we're gonna ask that you participate in that, we're gonna have a unity prayer, because more than anything else, our community must put God in the equation. Tonight was just the beginning of an ongoing conversation about hope and healing for Broward County. I want to personally thank members of the committee who supported me in this effort. Your partnership contributed to the success of this event, really appreciate you guys. Sheriff Scott Israel, thank you, your leadership is so needed in Broward County in regards to developing a better relationship with law enforcement and the community. A big thanks to double S V N and Craig Stevens, thank you so much. Cox Media, Hot 10599 Jam, and 97.3, Easy 93.1, the Broward Sheriff's Office, and the Wiggins Agency. To members of the community, clergy, politicians, business owners, and citizens, I encourage you to work together to build bridges that will unite us in spite of our diversity. Tonight's town hall meeting was not intended to generate a single, simple, or satisfying solution to address the complex challenges we face. Instead, this dialogue was an important first step, if you will, to something bigger than any one of us. It is a step, I believe, in the right direction. Our journey to rebuilding faith in our community and law enforcement requires a continuous and sustained effort to strengthen our relationships in the community. We know it is easier to do this in the best of times, and far more challenging in the worst moments of doubt and distrust. Today, I challenge the faith community to partner in this collective effort, because we know the church and their leaders play a vital role in redirecting the hearts of people back to God. Because our problem in our communities and in America with crime, and even with the issue of police brutality, has to do with the heart. It's a heart problem. And if you change the heart of a man, I firmly believe you'll change his behavior. All of us must admit our shortcomings and take the first step, if you will, to admitting that we don't always do things right, and then fix what is wrong and move towards redemption. I believe tonight, our journey towards redemption has begun. We must be accountable, we must be honest, we must be transparent, and we all deserve to be treated with respect and dignity. Police officers must stop the senseless killings of all lives, and citizens must stop the retaliation against police officers when they fail to live up to what is required of them. We must admit that they are those in our community who are not willing to live up to their responsibility to live in peace and to follow the law. You know, in August 28th, 1963, Dr. King gave a speech titled, "I Have a Dream." And he said in that speech, "I have a dream that my four children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." If we stop for a moment and meditate on what Dr. King said, I believe you would agree with me that his vision was for all of us to remove the racial barriers that divides us. No one, if you will, should allow that kind of an attitude to penetrate your heart. His vision was for everyone...
His vision was for everyone to be judged by the content of their character, their behavior. The things we do is really what we should be judged by, and not by the color of our skin. We will be judged by what we say to people, how we treat them, even when they mistreat us. Finally, I ask that we take a moment tonight and pray for healing, or the healing of hearts, if you will, so that we all can prosper in this wonderful county. This is the moment, I believe. This is the time. We can do this, but we can only do this together. I'll leave a scripture with you. I'm a pastor. I'm allowed to do it. 2 Chronicles 7:14. It tells us, "God's speaking to all of us. We're all God's children." He said in his word, "If my people..." That's an "if." We've got to have to want this. "If my people are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sins, and I will heal their land." Let's have hope that our neighborhoods can be safe from evil. Let's start loving each other, and I promise you, the healing will begin. Thank you.
Want me to just do a quick prayer?
Round of applause, as well as our moderator, Craig Stevens, Jill Tracy, and Carleen Myrie. Round of applause. Wasn't it a great evening? Before we are dismissed, we're going to ask each of the panelists, if you will, please come and join me. And we're going to ask Pastor Doug Soder if you will close us out in a unity prayer. As we stand across the stage, let's just all link up one to another.
Let's pray together. Father, we come to you tonight with our hearts that in many ways are burdened, sometimes sad, sometimes angry, sometimes afraid, sometimes wondering what's happening in our world. But Father, we know that in the middle of a storm, you give this great sense of peace. You call it peace that passes understanding. We don't know how it's going to work out, but we know that in the middle of a storm, you give us this calm, and you give us this heart to do something about what we see, a heart of justice, that justice could roll like a river. That's what you tell us in your word. And so, Father, I pray that all of us would look in the mirror tonight. And instead of raging against the darkness, we light our candle, and we walk toward your purposes in our lives. So, Father, we pray that you would show us what steps you want us to take, what conversations we're supposed to have with our own kids tonight, what conversations we're supposed to have with our neighbors, and ask the question, "God, why are you showing this to me? What I see? What can I do about it?" So, Father, we ask... ...a community that's humble enough to say, "I don't understand. I'm sorry." Father, we pray that you would make us one, and that this would be a community that's like a city on a hill, that Jesus, we could be the light of the world as you called us to be. And we pray this in your name. Amen.
Thanks very much, Sheriff.